Uh, Von Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Andy, for a moment of prayer and silent meditation. Thank you. Angela, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Henke.
Here.
President Dawson.
Present. Thank you. I want to remind everybody to make sure when we're up here, we're speaking to the mics so everyone can hear us clearly. Remind the audience, if your phone is on, be sure to turn it off or it'll vibrate. Uh, this time, could I get a motion for minutes of approval for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Finance Committee of the whole budget hearing?
To approve?
Got a motion from Mr. Michler, second from Mr. Fish for approval. Counsel discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion for approval of minutes for November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three Planning and Development Committee?
No move.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crabtree, counsel discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of December four, twenty twenty-three council meeting? Got a motion by Mr. Fish. Second by Mr. Michler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion for minutes of approval for January eighth, twenty twenty-four council meeting?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign, motion carries. Uh, are there any presentations or introductions? No, okay. Unfinished business. Uh, of council committees, the Finance Committee met Thursday, February first to discuss proposed orders twenty-four dash O dash zero three R and appropriation for nine million, four hundred thousand dollars. And also proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero four R and appropriation for five million, one hundred dollars. Both came back with a due pass recommendation unanimously from the Council Finance Committee. Angie, would you read proposed ordinance on second and third reading, twenty-four dash O dash O, twenty-four dash O dash zero two?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero two, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as five three eight nine three North Park Avenue and five three eight four seven North Park Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, four six five one four, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Motion is second to adopt this ordinance on second reading.
No move.
Got a motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Fish, council discussion. Council discussion. Seeing none, we'll open up. No council discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public like to speak for against this ordinance? So please come forward and do so. Seeing none. Turn it back for the council, any more council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted the council to know that I did go out and take a look at the area, and I think this is a great addition for our city and will stimulate more people wanting to be part of our city.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Michler, second from Mr. Fish to adopt this on third and final reading. Angie, would you read it by title only and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero two, an ordinance annexing certain real estate commonly known as five three eight nine three North Park Avenue and five three eight four seven North Park Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, four six five one four, and declaring the same to be part of the city of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero three R by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash zero three dash R, an ordinance appropriating nine million, four hundred thousand from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the LaSalle, McKinley, and Benham Area Water and Sewer Project.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this on second reading?
No move.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holtz, council discussion. Tori, are you coming up here with a presentation for us? All right. Mr. Irwin.
Hi, council members, Tori Irwin, Public Works Director. Um, so we're here tonight to talk about the appropriation for the Benham project. Uh, so some background on the projects and why it's needed. Uh, the Benham area floods around the Tolson Center during intense rainfall events. The area was originally developed over marshland and is still a low area of the city with no outlet to any river. On the lower right part of the map that you can see is the original survey of the Elkhart County area, uh, from eighteen thirty, and that area is highlighted as a marsh area. Um, also, critical water main crossings under the railroad will be relocated, and infrastructure on the Benham Tower will be replaced and upgraded. The project will construct seven thousand, eight hundred forty-five feet of sanitary storm sewer and a lift station to convey separated stormwater directly to the Saint Joseph River. Um, this picture is of the Benham and Chapman neighborhood, and it is an example of what happens when the intense rainfall event happens and the combined sewers basically flood the streets. It's also a water main project. The project will construct five thousand, six feet of water main and relocate inaccessible water main, uh, crossing underneath the railroad. Third Street used to, uh, go over the railroad, um, and then there's an abandoned Saint Joseph Street that used to exist as well. And so the water main used to follow Third Street until it got relocated when the underpass was constructed in the fifties. Uh, the new water main will follow the roadway and provide better connectivity to the critical Benham Water Tower. Uh, the project will offer abandonment of obsolete, unused infrastructure along the previous Saint Joseph Street. Project will also replace fifteen lead service lines and three private water lines. Uh, it will provide neighborhood connectivity. It's a gateway project between downtown and the Benham neighborhood. The project will construct a new multi-use path connecting Benham, the Benham neighborhood, to downtown. Modifications to the walkway beneath the underpass, more lighting, and make it more pedestrian appealing. It's an integral part of the vision for the Benham Neighborhood Plan. It also serves as a catalyst for downtown's future. Uh, the project will reroute underground infrastructure that currently exists beneath Second Street, opening up land for potential redevelopment. It will also collapse the Y that currently exists when Benham splits to Second and Third, uh, consolidating everything to Third Street and prepping the area for possible two-way street conversion in the future. The proposed funding is nine point one, nine point four million dollars in ARP funds for the water and sewer infrastructure, and then five point one million in other funds for a total of fourteen point five million of project investment.
Thank you, Tori. Mayor Wright.
Good evening, counsel.
Evening.
I'd like to, uh, first of all, thank Tori and his team for the work, uh, on this particular project and the work that he's done, uh, in order to make sure that it is now in front of you. Uh, it is a very important project linked to other strategies that, uh, we talked to you about during the Finance Meeting, but I wanted to make sure that we brought them up again today. Uh, those particular projects that we're talking about are strategies that, uh, we vetted in multiple ways throughout stakeholder meetings that we've had throughout, uh, the last couple of years. The strategies that we're speaking are strategies that have been, uh, put forth over the last five, six, seven years, uh, that we were able to bring forward in order to make sure that we were seeing a comprehensive way, uh, to look at not just, uh, Elkhart's infrastructure, but our quality of place relationships, uh, as well as our public safety relationships. This is a very important strategy for us to begin with, and the Benham Avenue piece is just the first piece that we absolutely need in order to do those things, like, uh, make sure that we are connecting our downtown and moving ourselves, uh, towards a place where we can, where we have the yielded proven results that we've seen in other neighborhood strategies that we've had. We've seen, uh, the Downtown River District area as well. We've invested in it, it has yielded results. Uh, we know what happens when we look at assets that exist inside of our communities and then, uh, ensure that we're building a platform for those assets to be successful. And so with respect to our plan, uh, it will be, uh, unfurled or evolved over the course of the next couple of years, uh, but it will make sure, uh, that we give, uh, will make sure that we give you, uh, the economic, uh, the economic outcomes as well as how we're going to absolutely make sure that they are a vested piece of, these are vested projects that we'll have for years to come. Um, I'm going to, uh, let Mike Huber walk up and, and give you a little bit more detail on how these projects, uh, how this particular project links to those others. Thank you for, uh...
Thank you, Tori.
Thank you, Mayor Wright.
Good evening, Mike Huber, uh, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. Um, as the mayor noted, the city of Elkhart has undertaken multiple community planning initiatives over the past four to five years. Um, while these planning projects were initiated by different administrations, they did follow a similar, I think fairly unique structure in the planning process, um, that, that involved a kind of a collaborative ownership and funding of the planning process. Um, we had, um, processes led in, in parts by our community stakeholders. The city was just a participant, not necessarily the primary leader or funder in the initiative. Specifically, the River District Plan, the twenty forty Diversification Plan, Thrive twenty forty, the Downtown Master Plan, and the Benham Plan, um, all included extensive community input and vetting of the strategies and tactics, um, that were included in those plans. That helps us be more accountable, and it gives us assurances that the objectives and the actions in those, in those plans that, that the city is responsible for, um, reflect both the community's vision and then again, hold us to that level of accountability. The core focus of many of these initiatives relate directly to building the kind of city that, that can compete and win the battle for talent to support a more diverse economic base and provide enhanced quality of life, not just to attracting new residents, but for the residents who already invested in living here. The primary outcomes reflected in all these planning processes relate directly to the city's ability to attract investment, growth, and prosperity based on metrics reflected in increases in housing, increases in jobs, increases in private investment, property tax assessments, income tax revenues, and population growth. A common thread across these many planning processes is a recognition of the power of a cornerstone resident amenity project supported by intentional public investments. These projects then act as a catalyst to spur private investment. Examples of this can be seen with A Lerner, Well-Filled Botanic Gardens, and the Beacon Health and Aquatic Center, and their impacts on attracting business investment and new residents to downtown and the River District. In fact, we've measured that just in the last four years, average per square foot assessed valuations in the, in the River District have nearly doubled, and those in the kind of core CBD have increased over fifty percent. The Tolson Center represents the city's newest cornerstone project, and this Benham project is one of the supportive public investments that's required in order to set the table for the model to work in this area. A core component of the Benham Neighborhood Planning Process that was just completed identified the original establishment of the Benham Underpass Y and the city's urban renewal efforts with the negative impacts related to how they split and led to the demolition of the original neighborhood fabric. The utility improvements that are included in this project will set the table for the infill housing strategies that are identified in that plan, which will help weave that fabric and restore those original, uh, housing patterns. Uh, and the consolidation of the Y, as Tori noted out, as Tori noted, will create an opportunity to provide dedicated pedestrian connectivity, um, that connects this area directly to the downtown. Speaking of the downtown, and as Tori also noted in his presentation, the Downtown Master Plan identified the impacts resulting from past decisions to make Second and Third Streets one-way. As a result of this decision, these streets have become thoroughfares taking traffic through downtown rather than to downtown. This has contributed to a lack of safety for pedestrians and walkers and has led to a lot of the, the, uh, demolition of buildings and the vacant lots that we have in, in the Second and Third Street corridors. One of the central tenets of the new plan is to restore all the one-way streets back to two-way streets and provide for traffic calming and parking improvements to attract new investment back to these corridors, again, raising the kinds of assessed valuation through new investment that we are seeing in, in the other parts of downtown. Um, this realignment of the Y to meet Third Street is a major component that supports these objectives. Again, we've seen the power of these plans, we know these plans are vetted by the community, we know they'll work. This is an investment that starts the ball rolling for a number of these kinds of initiatives, fits with what, what the community tells us they want, and we appreciate your support on the project.
Of course. Mr.? Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this Benham project that we have before us is long overdue. We should have done this fifteen, twenty years ago. Benham is unsafe when you get a lot of rain. I've had people call me during storms and say, "You need to see it for yourself." And I've seen it, and it's very, cars cannot go through, traffic is blocked. Some people even had personal problems because their cars flooded out, and it's just unsafe when this rains come and this core, main corridor is blocked. You cannot get through, and so I'm just glad that we finally gonna fix it. Thank you.
We did...
Other comments?
Public Works did half of the project about thirty years ago, but never was able to find the funding or get the ball across the finish line to finish the rest of it. So this is, this is the time.
On your watch.
Thank you, Tori. Mr. Fish.
Oh. Thank you for a good presentation. Um, I've just got three things that I want clarification on. Um, will the water tower be affected, uh, in this process?
Uh, physically, no. Uh, we will have to drain the water tower. We're gonna coincide it with some touch-up painting that has to happen with the water tower. Um, we will have to drain it in order to do all the water main work around the area, or else we risk endangering the workers as they're working underground on the water main. Um, but no, we don't, are not doing anything physically with the water tower.
Second, uh, will you be putting in a new lift station?
We will, and it will be a dedicated stormwater-only lift station. Yep.
Okay, good. Um, then, um, I don't know when you're planning, you know, to start digging in the ground, but what about business and home disruption for the piping?
So we will be digging underground this, starting this year on, uh, basically north of the railroad, and then next year is when the south of the railroad tracks really, uh, and Benham itself takes place. Um, so we will coordinate with the closures to make sure that everyone has access as needed, uh, but Benham and the streets that are affect impacted will close to through traffic, uh, during the construction.
So these are the loops you're talking about?
Yeah, yep, the loops and the spurs and the private mains, and yep, yep.
Um, so you'll let the public know in plenty of time for that?
And, and the neighborhood will, the contractor will coordinate with everyone who lives in, and has businesses in the area, so, yep.
I just had a couple of questions from some of the constituents, and that's part of the concern about the traffic flow and how they're gonna have to be able to snake through there.
Yeah, it's, uh, so the detour will be Main Street and/or Prairie, um, you know, depending on the railroad, um, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Henke.
Uh, that was just a side note about the water tower. Is the water tower, um, working at this point?
The water tower is online. It was painted this past fall. Um, there is a number of things that they have to come and fix with the painting, so it will be offline again next fall, which is when we're trying to coordinate, um, the work around there, so...
So on this particular area, I just have several questions, and that is, um, was the North Main Water Main replacement, was that completed? Jackson Johnson Water Main and Signal, did we do that?
The Jax- Jackson Johnson Signal is being replaced this year. Um, we're coordinating the dates. Um, the North Main project was a number of, uh, two, three years ago at this point.
And the West Lexington Water Main replacement?
That is in the schedule for probably twenty twenty-seven or so, uh, with the new water main, um, water rates.
Um, and, and the reason I ask is because West Lexington was, um, had money set aside, three million dollars, from ARP. So does that mean we're using that money, or is that money gonna sit?
All of the money that was dedicated in ARP is being redirected to this project.
So does that mean, then, these other projects, where will that money come from?
The other projects' monies have funding that is already dedicated, um, that we found out were in the budget, or it's going to be funded through utility rates.
Well, so it's just a little bit surprising that, um, the LaSalle Bristol Benham Water Main replacement was thought to be three point six million, and it turned out to be nine point, well, actually fourteen million, fourteen point five million.
The, the project did grow in scope, and no one foresaw what was going to happen with prices in twenty twenty.
Well, yeah, because it really bleeds the money out of all other areas of improvement, and then it goes back to ratepayers. So I'm just concerned that we're lobbying all the money, uh, one direction. And then, with that said, uh, the, the only thing that really bothered me, quite honestly, was the cover letter that talked about, uh, the loop of water mains the cover letter that talked about the loop of water mains, eliminate some extensive shared private lines, get that, eliminate lead services. But when we heard the presentation Tuesday in the finance meeting, it really came about the hope for expansion to the area workforce housing and some of the other things for the area. So I was just hopeful that that would have been the thrust of this economic recovery and not make it look as though there's all this, from your perspective as an engineer, it may have been all the utility stuff, but the realism is $14 million turned out to be because of that whole area that's being invested in once again to see, I guess, as a stabilizer and a reuse, repurposing of that area. I'm not exactly sure how to say it, but I would have hoped that the presentation would have been more about that. So with that, this tells me that these other projects are going to happen, but they're going to have to happen at a later date, and they're going to be paid for not by ARP money, but by utility rates. So there was that. And then I would like to ask Mike a couple of questions, if I could do that. Thank you, Tori. As always, you got a good presentation. So having been on the River District Implementation Team, it bothers me that this is not the model we used then. We had an actual economic impact that told us what we had to have as a tax-based payback for this thing to work. And so my question to you is, now that, you know, we have $16 million Tolson, $14 million this expansion, plus the other stuff that you'll be asking for, you spoke to having an overlay map that kind of showed return of expenditures covering its cost and having a payback. Do you actually have that?
We're in the process right now of compiling the vacant lots and the, what we think we can get in terms of the new investment related to new housing in addition to the other multifamily projects, and we're looking at, again, it's very speculative based on the corridors that we're opening up and what areas are available for redevelopment, which areas aren't available for redevelopment, but we're looking at that on a per-acre and per-square-foot basis. It's not fully calculated yet, but we're working on it.
Because the amount of money expended actually on infrastructure on River District, I know we had 6 million underground, and I know we had a $6 million parking lot, but that would also say that we induced the aquatic centers. So we had about 12 million overall with 350 million brought back of private funding. So it's a whole different model, because you're talking about multiplex housing.
We're talking about a mix, a diverse mix of housing units and housing product.
Would that be workforce, low-income?
It would be market rate, it would be, it's market rate, it's workforce, you know, we're planning, we're not anticipating, it's what the development community is going to drive.
So what I'm after realistically is to look at, because this doesn't model River District at all, you know, we had companies ready to sign by the time the ground was broken, and this one, I'm hearing that we're going to invest all this money and then we're going to hope that something does come around. I would like to see that there's an overlay that shows a little bit more of the housing, a little bit more of the mixed use. Which ones are private, non-subsidized, so we can actually get a feel for how much money? And then, what is the new investment going to look like overall?
Sure, we're in, like I said, we do have developers who are waiting for developable spots right now. We're finalizing RFPs on three different city-owned opportunities in the area. You know, we control what we can control in terms of, we didn't go in and buy all of the land here, but we do know what lots we do have, and we know that the investment's going to be in the hundreds of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in return back to the city in private investment.
Good, I hope that's, I hope that's true, because that's what Elkhart is looking for, and to be able to go to the next step, that's obviously what it obligates us to.
That's exactly what's identified in both the downtown and the Benham Plans. They both have measurable, achievable goals, much like the River District Plan did as well, in terms of new housing and new private investment that goes along in these corridors.
And then finally, you know, when the city makes this, when taxpayers in general make this level of investment, there has to be some obligation for that same area to come to full code and zoning compliance. Otherwise, we end up, you know, with like the park on Franklin Street, well, you know, the city said if we just invest there, they'll follow suit and clean things up. Well, they didn't, and we just made $174,000 investment into a park that has mainly made it very lit and sprinkled for illegal activities. We didn't have a plan, so I'm hopeful, that's why I pushed for a real plan when we make this level of investment. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I did just want to add something that was clarifying, Councilor Hinky, because I think it was a little confusing. This appropriation that is before you tonight is for an infrastructure project, right? So all of the economic development that we are talking about, that's what we're laying the groundwork for with this infrastructure investment. This is a necessary infrastructure project. So I didn't want it to be confusing that any of this appropriation is going for any of those future economic development projects. We just know this is the first piece of the puzzle that we have to put into place to make this land developable and to make our water and sewer system safe and what the people of Elkhart deserve.
Were you not here Tuesday for the presentation?
Excuse me, David. I think David's points were well-made, because during our finance committee meeting, some of this came up, and he wanted to ensure that that happened, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's not what this appropriation is. This appropriation is for infrastructure.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public. Public who'd like to speak with regards to this.
My name is Ralph Spellbrink. I live on the street that Senator Barack Obama visited on the first Sunday of May of 2008. I want to speak against eliminating the one-way streets. South Bend has done that. It has increased congestion in the downtown area, makes it more difficult to attend events at Century Center or the Morris. So I hope you keep the Second and Third one-way street. Probably in the 80s, that was State Road 19. It went through town, and then since then, it's gone around town.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Counsel discussion. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I think the infrastructure, but the potential infrastructure improvements are very exciting for the area. 15 lead service line replacements is very good news. The new walking path, I think, is also very good news as well. The only questions I have is I heard railroad mentioned a few times, and I know whenever the word railroad is mentioned, that sometimes that could lead to additional costs, delays, because we have to have a relationship with the railroad. Has there been any conversation or anticipated difficulties in that regard?
There has been difficulties. We are working through things with the railroad. We have built an allowance into the contract to account for what we've estimated could be any cost incurred with railroad and flagging. Thankfully, this is underneath the underpass, and the tracks are already, we're not touching the tracks or the superstructure for the bridge, so we're hopeful that things go smoothly with the railroad.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is also, you know, the city spends a fair amount of our budget on police protection and fire protection, which not only protects residents, but it protects private property as well. Reducing flooding to the area will not only act as an economic incentive to hopefully develop some of the lots there that some developers may be a little hesitant to develop because of flooding issues, but it will help protect taxpayer investment in that area as well and their property values. Overall, I think this is a good step forward for developing the area and to supporting additional development downtown as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hinky.
Yeah, we do have several areas of flooding in the city of Elkhart. So, you know, I think this is just one of those, and if it has economic recovery return, it is investable, it does make sense. I just wanted to go and, for Corinne, if you would have been at the meeting, you would have been up with what Mike Huber said. This is really about the future investment and payback of the next investments, which includes housing and commercial private spaces in that area. So as the Minister of Information, I'd ask you to step into that conversation before you correct me again. Thank you.
Angela, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Hinky for third and final, got a second from Mr. Mishler.
Angela, would you read this by title only and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-03-R, an ordinance appropriating $9,400,000 from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the LaSalle-McKinley and Benham Area Water and Sewer Project. Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-04-R by title only, please?
Proposed Ordinance 24-0-04-R, an ordinance appropriating $5,100,000 from the Elkhart Capital Outlay Fund for the LaSalle-McKinley and Benham Area Water and Sewer Project.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Second to read, you got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Ms. Curry to adopt this from second reading. Any council discussion? This is pertinent to the first ordinance we just passed. Seeing none, open up, yes?
I see that, the only thing I would have asked on this one, and I was talking to Alex after the last finance meeting, we all allude to what the next level of investments are going to look like. They're more not in line with infrastructure, but more of the building on top and the investment moving forward. The incentives, and there we can talk about how it does correlate to the River District in which we offered low-interest loans through city funds that would pay back city at three times its normal investment amount, but it was cheaper money for investors, and that would have come out of the capital investment account, which is what we really designed it for. The only thing I would have said is if there were other funds we could have used, so that would have been left available, because we know that is going to be the next step. We'll end up changing money and moving riverboat money and probably rainy day money to backfill what we're doing right now. It just makes extra moves, but I was trying to keep the capital investment account.
Hey, could you have the council discussion? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public, because there's one in the audience who would like to speak. Seeing none, return to the council floor. Angela, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
President, or Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero on third and final.
Thank you. There are no table ordinances and resolutions, there are no ordinances on first readings, no resolutions, there are no vacation hearings. Is there any other new business from council members? Mr. Hinky.
I know I've asked for ambulance billing information some time ago. I just wondered if it was coming in the near future, and you can text me if you will. I know the problem is the number of write-offs and so on, that it's hard to get our arms around, but I guess that's the whole point of the thing, so we can improve our system. Also noticing that the city has a Facebook, and I'm wanting to know who the author of that Facebook is. Elkhart City Facebook.
All right, could somebody get with him after the meeting, let him know who the author is?
We're going to need that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Seeing none, reports of mayor, border works, for the safety, city department heads.
Good evening, counsel. I have a few numbers that I wanted to share with you that I think are pretty crazy when we look at how we handle winter weather in Elkhart. So in the 31 days of January, 14 of those days were dedicated to clearing snow. And we look at the different departments that are involved in clearing snow, whether that's from streets, sidewalks, et cetera, we had over 30,400 staff hours in those 14 days clearing snow off the roads. That includes over 20 miles of sidewalk. We used over 3,600 tons of road treatment, so the salt and beet mixture road treatment, over 3,600 tons. And then as quickly as the snow came, it left, and within a few days, we had, what, a 40 or 50-degree warm-up that exposed a whole bunch of potholes, so all of our crews really quickly pivoted from plowing snow to filling potholes. In those last couple of weeks of January, we filled about 200 potholes, which is about 80 tons of that cold-mixed asphalt patch. And through all of that, I see one of those department heads here, which is Josh Holt from Central Garage. Throughout all of that, Central Garage was also working around the clock at the same time as all of our other crews, keeping all of that equipment on the road. So I just wanted to shine a spotlight on what the crazy weather in the month of January looks like in the city of Elkhart and how many hours we spent out there clearing that snow. Thanks.
I just wanted to say I used the 311 app for, I think it was four huge potholes next day that were filled, so that was fantastic to see.
At this time, privilege of the floor, there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak about anything that comes before the Elkhart City Council? I don't know, I did that.
Mr. Chairman, welcome to the new members on the council. I've got a statement addressed to you, Mr. President. Indiana city courts do not exist to protect city employees from evidence that might indicate misconduct, mistakes, or neglect. Therefore, city judge who eliminates or excludes evidence that could indicate bad conduct is certainly challenged ethically as well as constitutionally. Okay, the Elkhart truth in October of 2018 had this front-page article about code enforcement shortcomings. When this property owner went for a walk in southeast Elkhart in late July of 2018, he noticed some properties with the public health hazard of abandoned tires. These can be a breeding ground for disease-bearing mosquitoes. Several people died of these diseases across the state line in southern Michigan in 2019. Camera was purchased and pictures were taken of these public health hazard properties. After the film was developed, it was found there are almost 20 public health properties. Elkhart City Judge Grodnick eliminated or excluded all evidence submitted by this property owner at a trial in May 2018 for an alleged property code violation. What was it? Small door does not look good. Elected officials take an oath to follow the Indiana and United States Constitution. City Judge Grodnick seems to think the United States Constitution does not apply to Elkhart. Resolve therefore that Judge Grodnick be replaced because of his unconstitutional, unethical, dishonest, and abusive conduct. City of Elkhart was given the pictures in August of 2023. The Elkhart County Health Department was given copies of the pictures in August of 2018. Today is February 5th.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I skipped over the Neighborhood Association, so I need to come back to that. We'll close the public hearing and go to Neighborhood Associations. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on Neighborhood Association, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pemmeran Neighborhood Association. We did meet yesterday at 5:00 PM at the Pemmeran Park Pavilion, and we had another great discussion about issues in our neighborhood and our city. We were happy to have Officer Byers there to bring us up to date about the good work that our police department...
Seeing none, I skipped over the Neighborhood Association, so I need to come back to that. I'm going to close the public hearing and go to Neighborhood Associations. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on Neighborhood Association, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pemmeran Neighborhood Association. We did meet yesterday at 5:00 PM at the Pemmeran Park Pavilion, and we had another great discussion about issues in our neighborhood and our city. We were happy to have Officer Byers there to bring us up to date about the good work that our police department has been doing. We were happy to hear that the person that robbed the gas station on Friday was caught later that day, and so we discussed all these different things, and we also discussed making our neighborhood better and stronger. The one, a couple houses that are for sale, we reaching out, trying to find good neighbors to buy those houses. And we also discussed on the first Saturday, how some of us had went down to the County Corrections Building on Oakland. You can get rid of other disposable needles and stuff down there on the first Saturday of the month, and we talked about the upcoming Neighborhood Association meeting on February 24th. All neighborhoods would come together that morning from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Elkhart Public Library. So it was just another good meeting to just sit around with neighbors and discuss keeping our, our neighborhood strong and getting to know each other better. So it was good.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any other Neighborhood Association reports? Ms. King.
Also let the viewers know that the Elkhart Human Relations and Elkhart County Border Realtors are having their second annual youth poster contest from grade seven to 12. You have to be a Elkhart resident, city of Elkhart resident, and so please share with your Neighborhood Association and try to work with the schools to get.
Thank you. Any other Neighborhood Associations? Seeing none, there are no committee meetings to be scheduled. I'm going to, we're going to have the ad hoc committee who does the tax abatements. I'm going to be appointing Mishler, Mr. Fish, and Mr. Hinky, so we'll be scheduling that meeting pretty quick as we get into that season, tax abatement season, the CF1. Acceptance of communications.
Move for approval.
As we motion to accept communications, there are second.
Second.
Second, motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.